Let's go. My mama said what? Oh, okay. Okay. She couldn't get out of my new car, Henry. Okay, let's call it to order. City Clerk, we'll call.
Councilmember Agency Director Mann.
Present.
Marcus.
Here.
Silvio. Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have Pastor Chris Johnson from Grace Chapel who will do the invocation.
Thank you.
Who's the cameraman? There you go. It's going off.
I'd be happy to pray for the camera. We'll wait just a moment. Thanks for the privilege of prayer for beginning your meetings this way. Let's pray together. Gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for being a great God, and we begin this meeting by honoring you. We also begin this meeting by seeking your wisdom, your guidance, and your will. I thank you for each of the council members and their service to our community, and I pray that you would bless them this evening during this meeting and in their lives. Father, we thank you for the city of Lancaster, and we ask that you would continue to do a great work through our leaders in this town. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
And we have Bishop Henry Hearns to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And should I call you Bishop or Mayor? He used to keep his title, you know.
I took the title you gave me.
Okay.
I've always said all my life, since I've been big enough to know about it, that I'm proud to be an American, and I'm still proud. With that in mind, let us put a right hand over your heart, and let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anything on the agency consent calendar we need to poll for discussion?
Nothing for discussion. Do you think we need to poll RCC 3?
Oh, that's right. I can't vote on that. All right, let's pull that off.
I'll move that we adopt the agency consents calendar as currently composed.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous with Councilman Silvio absent. Okay, I'm going to recuse myself on item number three. I think my wife owns some property there. Is that it? Okay.
Let the record reflect that the mayor has left the room. I'll enter -- do we have any -- we don't have any speaker's cards, any correspondence on RCC 3? That being the case, any discussion, I'll entertain any motions.
I'll make a motion to approve RCC 3.
I'll second that.
Call for a vote.
It's a 3-2 with Mayor Paris recused and Councilman Silvio absent. Let the record reflect that Mayor Paris is back in the room, and I've handed over the chair to him.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Let's move on to -- there's an add-on to the agency R&amp;B 101 appropriation of redevelopment agency funds for additional pass-through payments. And Barbara Roswell will tell us about that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start my report by saying while the report says recommendation, this really, truly wouldn't be our recommendation if we had any other choice. The item for your consideration is requesting that you appropriate $783,000 from our redevelopment agency fund balance to provide funding to make additional pass-through payments to various taxing agencies in the cities. This comes as a result of the state's budget that they adopted late. As part of that budget, they required us to report to the county pass-through payments that we had made to the various taxing agencies in the city, and then the county compared that to their own calculations and found, discovered that, well, in their estimation, we had underpaid. We believe that our calculations are correct. This is not an issue that is only happening in the county of Los Angeles. It's actually a problem up and down the state where the redevelopment agencies and the various counties are not in agreement as to how those pass-through agreements or those pass-through payments should be calculated. Because of that, there is a push to have clarification at the state level, at the state Controller's Office, to clarify how those payments should be calculated, and we believe that when that's done, that it will be found that we had actually been calculating it properly. If we fail to make the payments that the county is saying that we still owe, the state will put us on what they're calling a death penalty list. What that means is we would, our redevelopment agency would basically no longer be able to conduct business. We wouldn't be able to enter into any type of development agreements or any type of agreements that would allow us to conduct economic development activities within the city and within the redevelopment agency. We feel it's wrong. We don't agree with it, but at this point, we really have no other choice. We will be making these payments. We have to make them by November this, not November, February 1st, and we have to show proof that we've made those payments in order to avoid being put on this death penalty list. What it does, what it means to us is that we are now losing another $783,000 that could have been used for economic development within the city of Lancaster, and instead, that money will be going to other agencies and passed on to the state. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. It's, like I said, it says recommendation, but it truly, if we had any other choice, we would not be making this recommendation. We are following the recommendation made by the California Redevelopment Association, who is a group that works to address redevelopment-type issues, and they're pressing for the clarification of legislation. But it's their recommendation that we make these payments.
If I might add one thing, I have called the city of Palmdale, who was hit to the tune of, I think, over a million dollars. I've talked to the county about this. The Supervisor's Office asked them to intervene with the state, with the county controller. I mean, what Barbara didn't say, but I can say, is this is ridiculous in a time when we need it, we're the ones who are creating the jobs, that this is money that we can't use. And this was a debate on staff about the recommendation, and we reluctantly give you the recommendation to pay it because we can't risk the death penalty part of it.
Thank you.
We will, I would like to add, when we send the payments, we will include a letter that lets the agencies know that we're making the payment in protest and that we will be seeking reimbursement once the legislation is passed to clarify it, and we anticipate that the money would be back due to us.
I'm thinking of that Jack Nicholson movie, you know, not, was it Jack Nicholson? Where the lawyer movie, and she was going to strongly protest, strongly object, remember? What's the name of that movie?
A Few Good Men.
A Few Good Men, yeah. She strongly objected. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a comment. This is, once again, we should just get this, you know, this little plastic gun up here and just put the state of California on it. We can hold it to our heads every time we vote for stuff like this, because once again, the state of California is holding a gun to our head, you know, basically, and saying, well, we're going to threaten to not do this or not do this for you if you don't do something that we're basically disagreeing with. And I think the message has to be sent very clear to these agencies that are getting the pass-through increment that collect the interest on the money, but you better not spend it because we're going to be taking it back. And it's just, just another one. It's just, they come up all the time. And so we'll have to vote again reluctantly because of the penalty of death.
Question I have for Mark, the city manager. Mark, can we not ask when we write the letter, obviously in dispute, can we not ask for, I mean, what is it, what's the harm of us asking for interest, too? So, one and, one and a half?
I've already, I've already included that in the letter.
Okay.
Good.
Well, my question was, why don't we pay them what we believe we owed them, and then why don't we give them an IOU? But it was the death penalty that was brought up. But when I read through this, I thought of two words: rapacious and pillaging. And that's what they're doing. They are holding a gun to our head, and it's, they're punishing us for being good stewards. The city of Lancaster is doing very well with their monies and their budgets, and the state is coming after local government, and unfortunately, there's not much we can do about it. So also, again, we'll be grudgingly voting yes.
Is there a motion for succession from the state?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We have a motion. Could you move to approve?
I think it's Ron's turn this time.
My turn?
I did it last time.
Well, Ed's out here. Can we say that? Ed moved for it. Okay, I'll move. So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Let's vote. Oh, it was unanimous. Moving on, we have the consent calendar, and something tells me somebody's going to want to remove something from this consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have several speaker's cards on CCC 4, so if we can remove that, and I'll move to adopt the consent calendar as then currently composed.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Unanimous with Councilman Silvio absent.
There's the speaker's cards for CC 4.
Mr. Pelka's back. Nice to see you.
I think he's the first card.
Okay, and this is on item CCC 4. CCC 4. Scott Pelka.
I have a small scenario to ask. Say I have a pit bull. Since I don't, I'll make one up. Call him Rex.
Call him Rex. That's good.
Great name for a dog. And I'm walking my dog Rex, find myself down the street, minding my own business. At what point do you decide, or whoever's going to make the decision, that I'm going to be picked upon for walking my dog down the street?
Well, I would certainly hope that if you're wearing gang attire and you have a gang tattoo, that that might be a clue to the deputies and to animal control that this is a good person to harass. Make no mistake about it. That's exactly what I want them to do. And I know that there's a lot of, a lot of people that think that that's unfair, that's wrong, and on and on and on. But, you know, how many, how many decades of us being, being pillaged by these people do we have to put up with? And how many children have to be murdered for us to continue to put up with this? We have to start treating these people for what they are. They are an enemy of all of us, and I mean a real enemy, and we should treat them accordingly. And this is just one method of doing that.
So if I was Latino and walking down the street, happened to have a plaid shirt on, maybe a bandana, would I be subject to accosting by the police?
I would assume that the sheriff's department has enough intelligence, I mean, real intelligence, CIA-type intelligence, that they know exactly who the gang members are.
I don't know. It would seem to me that this policy that the city's trying to enact here is one of being extremely racist in, in the, in your trying to promote this, and--
Well, I actually hate the Aryan Brotherhood as much as I hate all the other gangs, too.
Well, you know, that might be true. But I mean, for somebody to walk a dog who happens to be Latino or black, you know, to be picked on by the sheriffs because they happen to have a pit bull, a pit bull mix, a rottweiler, whatever kind of a dog you would like to decide here, you know, is very unfair, and it does not, it happens to violate people's rights. And this has been approached to in the courts, and for the city to decide to come up with this, and I'd like to have a little more time because he took some of my time answering this, I bet, for the--
Well, you know how I am about being unfair.
Yes, I understand. So for the city to try to--
We'd be happy to give you some more time.
Which is a violation of people's rights, is extremely wrong, you know, and--
What rights am I violating here?
The citizen walking down the street, walking their dog.
That is a pit bull that's not neutered. How is that, how is that violating--
It's not neutered. Can you tell by looking at him, but you're driving down the street, looking--
If they're neutered, yeah. You see, there's these things dangling.
Okay, I'll give you an example. Back during December, you were driving in the Christmas parade, were you not? And there was an article in the newspaper that basically said that you were looking at people's pit bulls on the side of the parade route. You were profiling people because they had dogs on the parade.
The tattoos all over his body had something to do with it also.
Really? You've missed, you've missed seven dogs in that article.
No, there was one.
How many people have tattoos all over the body? Can you imagine?
Wait a minute. You read the wrong article. There was one dog.
How many people have tattoos over their shirt that you could tell?
I'm sorry.
Come on.
What?
How many, do they have shirts, tattoos over their shirt?
Mr. Pelka, I'm sorry that you're unable to tell a gangbanger when you see one.
I'm sorry you can't either.
Most of us are perfectly capable of telling a gangbanger when we see one. You see, they kind of advertise it.
They advertise it.
Yeah, you know, they wear gang, they wear gang insignias. They, they tattoo their bodies, you know.
Please, I know, I know five different tattoo artists, and I've tattooed everything to the bodies and they're not gang members.
Come on, come on.
Come on. Get real. Grow up.
Are you done now?
I swear, Raymond, you're, you're a piece of work. You're an absolute piece of work.
I'm what?
A piece of work.
A piece of work. Anybody else want to beat me up? Okay. Shall we have Lori come up? That looks painful.
It's, yeah, it's not good, but. I just wanted to see if regarding of this bill, section 6.08.030, letter C, if in addition to hunting dogs being exempted from this, if you would consider working dogs, search and rescue. I do search and rescue. I'm a volunteer.
Absolutely.
I don't, I don't have pit bulls. But I was wondering if that language could be incorporated, that any type of working dog, I know law enforcement--
Could you get together with the city attorney? I think that's an excellent base.
Mayor, we can, we can certainly incorporate that language, but we should do that as an amendment at a future meeting rather than adding it at this meeting. If we make any changes at this meeting to the ordinance, then we have to go back to this would be considered--
Okay, could we, could we plan on having the amendment on the next calendar?
Probably not on the very next meeting, but very soon. We have a number of things. There were some issues on what a qualified trainer was and a training program for the dogs. I have not yet received any information back from any of those people that raised that issue, and when I do, I will incorporate that in an amendment. There were a couple of other things raised in some of the emails that we'll incorporate in amendments, and of course, this, I think this is certainly an excellent idea that we should incorporate. Thanks, Sato. Mr. Mayor, I think we're going to have a number of different amendments that we're going to be, you know, updating it with and on this particular subject. I think the question would be for council would be what constitutes a search and rescue dog? Somebody could come and say, hey, my dog's a search and rescue.
Certification.
Right, and so that, you need to get that to the city attorney so he can actually incorporate that into the, into the amendment of what the certification is and the, and those, those agencies that are certifying. But that's a good idea.
Well, I'd also mention working dogs as in farm dogs and whatnot, people that use as flock guardians, rottweilers can be used as flock guardians. I do know that, so I don't know how to--
You know, the only, the only thing we're going to do is, I mean, we'll certainly work with you on this, and you make some excellent points, but we're not going to eviscerate the legislation either.
Oh, I understand. I understand that.
But, you know, the city attorney will be happy to meet with you or someone from his office to figure out how to take care of those concerns. I think they're legitimate concerns.
Okay.
Okay?
Great. Thank you.
Rebecca Barokans? Good evening.
I'm going to speak in opposition to the animal control ordinance. I would respectfully ask that the city consider splitting the ordinance into its two obvious and distinct, different parts. The Dangerous Dog Ordinance puts the responsibility for the dog's behavior squarely on the shoulders of the owner. It shines a light on dangerous or potentially dangerous behavior while giving responsible owners of less-than-perfect dogs an opportunity and a blueprint to address those behaviors that may be a concern to public safety. It has both teeth and a safety net. Most of us here are behind your desire to remove dangerous and vicious dogs and their irresponsible owners from the community. I would ask that you pass the Dangerous Dog Ordinance portion of the ordinance and then vigorously enforce it. I would then ask that you wait on passing the breed-specific mandatory spay and neuter as being overly broad in the scope of the breeds it touches. Pit bull and rottweilers, or any dog that looks like one, could also mean certain atypical Labrador Retrievers, Rhodesian Ridgebacks, Boxers, the Swiss Mountain Dog family, Doberman Pinchers that are overweight, any of the Mastiffs, Coon Hounds, Bloodhounds, and even atypical Boston Terriers, English and French Bulldogs, just to name a very few. Add that to the thousands of permutations of mixed-breed dogs that contain no pit bull, which is not even a breed, or a rottweiler blood. It's been brought up that there may be DNA testing. I have a friend with an 80-pound dog that looks like a Labrador with a splash of chow and maybe a little Golden Retriever in it, and her DNA test came back as Yorkshire terrier. Little tiny dog, fits in a purse, not an 80-pound dog. So it's not, it's more of an art than a science as far as DNA testing, and the current ordinance really just targets male dogs, doesn't it? Because it's really not obvious when you're walking down the street, or the police with all their profiling, and even if they do it intelligently, a female dog that's neutered, sometimes that takes ultrasound to determine whether or not the dog is indeed neutered. So it falls more on male dogs than female dogs. Also consider that at any given time, our own shelter is unable to identify with any degree of accuracy about half the dogs that has listed online. I've gone through their website daily for a couple of weeks, and literally a third to half of the dogs are not properly identified by breed. So all of that starts to look more like a witch hunt instead of what it should be, a statement that this community will no longer tolerate irresponsible and criminal dog owners regardless of their breed of choice. Any dog can be dangerous if handled improperly. Lastly, has the city considered the published report by Dr. Duffy and Surple of the University of Pennsylvania that indicates that undesirable behavior tends to increase in female dogs after neutering? And I brought a copy of the report for the city attorney. Behaviors like stranger aggression, owner aggression, touch sensitivity, dog aggression, non-social fears, and excessive barking are all, tend to increase in female dogs that are neutered. Male dogs, problems are exacerbated also with behavior.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're out of time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I leave this with the city attorney?
Yes.
I mean, I ask that you split the ordinance, put on the dangerous dog part, we like that, and hold on the mandatory spay and neuter. I think it will accomplish what you were looking for.
Thank you. Is it Gail Milley? Miley?
Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Gail Milley from LA County Animal Control, and I'm here to address the council and urge you to postpone the vote on the ordinance amendments and hopefully meet with our department prior to approving the ordinance as it is presented tonight. We have some consents. I've gone through the ordinance with our director, Marshal Maeda, and some of the things that we're concerned about is that the sections of the proposed ordinance changes are not considered to be enforceable. Portions of the proposed ordinance appear to be in violation of constitutional law, and portions of the proposed ordinance are believed to be in violation of our current contract with the city of Lancaster.
Perhaps we need a new contract.
Well, and that's something that, you know, this is why we're asking for the postponement, so that we can address these items and items in that kind of form. We're also concerned in, in the spay and neuter part, section of the ordinance, we're concerned about the burden that it puts on the department.
Excuse me, but you, excuse me. You have a spayed and neuter law for the entire county.
Yes, we do.
For every breed.
But, but there are sections in there that are not spelled out as our current ordinance has stood the test of time in the court of law. This one has not. It has sections in here that we need to discuss that are contrary. It talks about holding times for animals while they go to the, go through the breed determination process.
The vice mayor has some questions for you. What's your name again?
It's Gail Milley.
Gail Milley. I see you're wearing your LA County badge on here.
I do, yes.
Are you officially representing the county of Los Angeles right now, or are you standing here as an individual?
I'm representing the county of Los Angeles and Marshal Maeda and the department.
Okay. My question is, did we, if she's, okay, I mean, did we get, I don't have a letter in my packet from Mike Antonovich or from the animal controller--
Just so you folks know what's going on, there's a protocol that we follow, and we follow it with each other, and it's the rules. And right now, we're feeling like the county has broke those rules that are important to us, and that's why people are getting upset. And I know whenever the crowd, you know, not the crowd, but whenever the audience sees all of us getting upset, you're wondering why. This is why. This is, this, as far as we're concerned, is a breach of protocol. We have no written documentation from you. We have no letter from you. We're feeling a little bit sandbagged, but it doesn't matter because the folks also ought to know that we have been incredibly unhappy with animal control for quite a while. We're unhappy with the way you have been billing the city of Lancaster. You've been giving us bills that you yourself have acknowledged are inflated, and for you to come and do this, you know, you're really not in the best position to come in and bushwhack us in light of all of the history that we have had to undergo with the county of Los Angeles Animal Control. Now specifically, if you're going to come in here and tell me something's unconstitutional, specifically what is unconstitutional, and could you give me the name of the case that you're relying on?
No, I can't not give you that.
So that's just an accusation that you've made up somewhere along the line?
No, it is not something I've made up.
Wait a minute.
It is something that I've asked to discuss and asked to postpone.
No, what you said, you stood there and told me that this ordinance was unconstitutional. And you did that--
I didn't say the whole ordinance. I said there were certain sections.
Well--
The holding time of animals, due process, where you have--
Wait a minute, the due process for the dog?
No.
Guess what? In Lancaster, dogs don't get due process.
Process for the owner of the animal. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me comment on this a little bit. This, I agree with you. This is a sandbag. I question whether she's even read the latest draft of the ordinance.
I have.
I doubt it, because the comments that are made are the same ones that were made to the first draft of the ordinance, and these were made in a letter, very generic, very nonspecific, back in November, early December. Following that letter, we had a conference call, and I think it was with you.
No.
Then it was somebody else in the office that gave us word for word, word for word, the same objections to this-- the same objections to this ordinance. Based on those objections, I looked at it carefully. I concluded that in some respects, their points were well taken, but in most respects they were not. We reviewed the procedures that were in the county ordinance dealing with potentially dangerous and vicious dogs. We reviewed the process that they followed. We found out the process they followed doesn't even match their ordinance. They never, they never get to the point of potentially dangerous and vicious dog proceedings. They impound them under a prior section, and then they hold them for a minimal amount of time, six days when they're licensed, four days when they're not licensed. And then they dispose of the dog depending on, you know, the nature of what's going on with that particular animal. The ordinance that I have crafted closely follows the state statute, providing for a process for making those determinations. It is full of due process. More due process than the county animal control now follows when they impound a dog. The whole process is, under the state law, there's a specific process that is spelled out. The statute then says that as an alternative, local government may adopt an administrative hearing as opposed to going direct to the Superior Court. I chose to do that. We use the basic due process requirements of filing of notice, filing, et cetera, with an administrative hearing, an administrative hearing officer appointed by the city but independent of the city. The appeal is to the Superior Court. We also impose some additional requirements following the state statutes define terms of dangerous or potentially dangerous and vicious dogs. Again, there's a specific provision in the statute that I'm referring to that authorizes us to adopt different rules, more stringent rules. The one thing we can't do, and when we're dealing with dangerous and vicious dogs, is be breed specific. The only thing we can do that is breed specific is provide for spay and neutering, which we have also done. And so, I think these comments, I mean, the fact that these are the same comments to the very first draft that is now substantially different, I wonder whether they're really reviewing it. It's just mind-boggling to me that they have the same comments.
Can I, can I something to say before you continue on? I'm not, we're not attacking, we're not, we're not...
No, you are.
We have a pro...
You are.
Excuse me, we do not have a problem with the dangerous dog ordinance. Our problems are with the, with the second part of it. The second part, yes, you are, you are correct. It follows very much with the state law, and that is not where we have the problem. The due process problem is, is in 10.37.110, and it does not allow for, it says if a dog does not have a license on it, that the person doesn't have to be notified, there doesn't have to be a letter sent.
Well, how do you do that if there's not a license on the dog?
Well, that's the thing, is they say, in the ordinance, it could be interpreted as saying, if a dog is not wearing a license tag, maybe it has a microchip or something.
You know, if you, if you guys, if you guys put this much energy and this much effort in protecting our children from these dogs, I would be a lot more sympathetic to you. But there is not a week go by, I don't get some type of email, either the, their, a person's pet has been attacked by these pit bulls, or their child has been attacked. Now, why isn't this, this level of concern and coming to the meetings, doing, directed at saving these children and saving these neighbors, instead of saving what you know is our vicious animals? It seems like you've skewed your mission here a little bit.
I think that, again, you know, I think the problems are with the second part of the ordinance.
Thank you.
But the section she just quoted from is from the first part of the ordinance.
Councilman Cilio had a question.
I didn't have a question, but I had a comment. It takes, we take a lot of grief up here, and it takes a lot, speaking of myself, not of my council, our council.
Oh, I never take any grief, no.
But it, it takes a lot to make me angry, and frankly, something you said tonight made me angry. You stood up and told us that the county code has withstood the test of time, and I'm sure you meant that in terms of legal challenges. That may be true.
I was talking about the mandatory spay and neuter ordinance.
Mm-hmm. In terms of legal challenges?
Yes.
That may be true, but the county ordinance is simply not effective, or else we wouldn't all be here tonight looking at this. If the county ordinance did their job, and your department could fulfill what that's supposed to accomplish, we wouldn't be here. This whole point would be moot. We wouldn't have children being attacked.
Except that you haven't adopted our ordinance. You haven't adopted our ordinance, so we're not enforcing it.
This ordinance is more stringent, as I understand. There's no free bite in our ordinance.
No, no, again, you're confusing the mandatory spay and neutering versus the vicious dog. And the vicious dog, we do not have a problem with. It's the other part of the ordinance, the mandatory spay and neutering. And there's loopholes, as far as I'm, you know, we're concerned, as far as the section that talks about dogs that have a, the owner has a hunting license, you know? If the owner, anybody can get a hunting license, so, including gang members, and...
That's, any felon that's a gang member, I can't, I don't think he's going to go through the hunter's safety course and get a hunting license. That's pretty ridiculous.
Okay.
You know, you know, this whole thing of you coming up here, this is incompetence by your department once again. You not only failed to take care of our city the way that it should be, but in the 11th hour, you were not here for the first reading of this. We have been working with the county, Norm Hickling's not here, I don't know, I don't know if he even knows that you're here. You have not given us any correspondence or any input, and this is just, this is just political posturing on your part, and that is totally out of line.
I just have one question. Who told you the cameras were going to be here?
Who told me the cameras were going to be here? Nobody. It's all over the news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Kaufman?
I'm sorry, what?
Is it Judy Kaufman?
Just a few comments. I'm the vice president of the California Federation of Dog Clubs and have been working in the anti-pet ordinance. Pardon me? How's that? Okay. My comment on this is that this ordinance, the way it's written, is akin to saying that more owners of red cars are issued speeding tickets. Therefore, all owners of red cars will be penalized regardless of their driving record and will pay higher fees and fines. The city council members were given much info on why these types of laws don't work anywhere and have not worked anywhere. In fact, the European Union is repealing their 10-year-old ordinances on breed specific because they found that it had no impact whatsoever on bite incidents. At least one member of the city council has admitted not reading any of the info we provided. This ordinance punishes the dogs, not the owners, and therefore, I don't know how it's going to do any good. It's been said several times that state allows, state law allows the local government to pass these kinds of laws. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. And Mayor Paris has said he's willing to shoulder the, quote, "burden" of inconveniencing.
I think I said I'll bear the weight.
Excuse me?
I think I said I'll bear the weight.
All right, well, whatever.
Okay.
For inconveniencing responsible dog owners to facilitate ridding the community of gang members, I am not willing to be targeted as such.
Thank you. Carol Kelly?
Once again, I want to say, the dangerous dog portion is well done and can serve as an example to other cities. It does need a few changes here and there, but all in all, is well done. It targets the irresponsible owners, it targets the guys with their blue and red caps and their pit bulls walking down the street as if they own it, terrorizing a neighborhood. Mr. Mayor, you wanted to do something about it, and you have done that with the dangerous dog portion of this ordinance. Again, it is the mandatory spay and neuter portion of the ordinance I take issue with. The mandatory spay and neuter of all pit bull terriers or any dog resembling them, and all rottweilers or any dog resembling them.
Excuse me, I think, I think that's wrong. It's not the terriers. I mean, we didn't take out all terriers, right? We didn't take out all terriers.
It's in the definition of pit bull, which includes American pit bull terrier, American Staffordshire terrier, Staffordshire bull terrier, or any dog that exhibits physical characteristics which predominantly...
There's three, right? Okay.
I kind of lumped the Staffordshires and the Bulldogs in with the...
Okay.
Okay, fix my time.
I'll give you more time.
Thank you.
Okay. Starter over, okay?
Breed discriminatory laws cause unintended hardships to responsible owners of entirely friendly, properly supervised, and well-socialized dogs that happen to fall within the restricted breed category. Although these dog owners have done nothing to endanger the public, they are forced by their government to spay or neuter their dog or suffer the consequences. Sterilization procedures are major medical operations which may threaten the health, development, and temperament of dogs. No surgery is free of risks. The decision to subject an animal to such procedure should remain the responsibility of the owner and the veterinarian. I do not appreciate letting gangbangers determine how we live. A harmful consequence of breed discriminatory laws is their tendency to compromise rather than enhance public safety. Resources are shifted away from effective enforcement of laws that have the greatest chance of making our community safer, meaning leash laws, license laws, and dangerous dog law enforcement. Councilman Cilio, you remarked at the last council meeting that there are provisions for owning an intact restricted breed. The portion of the ordinance permitting an unaltered pit bull terrier or rottweiler is overkill. Requiring OFA or Pen Hip certification and OFA heart certification is done to help determine breed quality, breeding quality. Not everyone wanting an attack dog is looking to breed them. Also, the requirement that they be registered with AKC or UKC or another valid registry, the owner may not be interested in competition. I was very upset to read the additional exemption of hunting dogs. The ordinance should not be adjusted for the comfort of certain people. If this ordinance, if this portion of the ordinance is accepted, anyone wanting to hunt with a restricted breed should be required to achieve all the requirements that anyone else has to achieve for such dogs. Councilwoman Marcus, at the last meeting you required, you, I'm sorry, you remarked how we are building the seventh animal shelter in the county. I would like to point out that our current shelter was built in 1958, 51 years ago, when our population was far less than it is now. It has not been maintained or properly improved as our population has increased. In 1980, the population of Lancaster was approximately 45,000. In 1990, it was approximately 97,000, and the estimated population as of July '07 was Our animal care and control handles the entire Antelope Valley, estimated population 300,000. Mandatory spay and neuter will be expensive and taxing to an already underfunded animal control. I am asking you to drop the mandatory spay and neuter portion of the ordinance and put our energies and resources into implementing the well-done dangerous dog portion. Thank you.
Thank you. AJ Listman?
First, let me say what Carol said.
She does it well, doesn't she?
That'll save a little bit of time here. No, I, I do agree with the speakers who have said that the dangerous dog portion is a good idea, does need some tweaking, agree that we can tweak it later on, tweak it as we go. The mandatory spay and neuter, separating it is an excellent idea, and I think you really should consider it and consider going, dropping it entirely, never mind just reviewing it. Separating it at this point, vote on the dangerous dog law because there's your teeth. Let's see, you've been quite plain about your intent to use this to harass gangbangers and hopefully force them to leave the valley. Well, I think you can harass them all you want with petty things like dogs, or the color of their car, or anything else. I think if you really want to get them out of here...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm going to give you more time, but I got to ask you this. How could you, you, say that their dog is something petty? It's not petty at all.
To them, the dog is petty.
Why would you think that?
To us, dogs are not petty.
Why would you think that? I mean, why, why do you love your dog any more than I love my dog?
I think that those people view those dogs simply as a tool to intimidate...
So you agree with me that that is happening?
I wouldn't be surprised if it happens. But then and again, there are other dogs out there that are equally as intimidating. I was in the park a couple of weeks ago, Lancaster City Park, with a dog, and I was menaced by two off-leash Chihuahuas, who were clearly intent on getting a piece of my dog. If I hadn't had my herding staff with me to keep those dogs at bay till I made their owner understand she was in violation of the leash laws, I could have stood a chance of having my dog torn apart by two Chihuahuas.
It would have been a much different result if they were pit bulls, and you and I know it.
Either way, my dog was being menaced because the leash laws aren't being enforced. I agree that we need, we need to put our effort into enforcing laws that already exist that have some teeth and meat to them, and passing the dangerous dog law and enforcing that is going to go a long way to help that issue. Quickly, let me say something else. The first speaker brought up profiling. I would like to bring up profiling also, simply because I think you need to realize that profiling in this country is not allowed. I would go so far as to say illegal, but I'm not sure that I could cite a specific law. However, I'm willing to bet that there's 27 ACLU lawyers standing out there waiting for you to profile people and then sue the city for profiling.
You know, I welcome them. I welcome them. The fact of the matter is, is, you know, the previous speaker said that we shouldn't let these gangbangers change the way we live. It was just eight months ago, there were streets in this community that you drove down, and there would be barricades, and they would make you pay money to pass. That was in our town not too long ago.
Then why aren't we out there arresting for that violation?
In fact, we are. The gangs are actually leaving this community, but we're not going to let up on the pressure. You know, to act as if this is a small thing is beyond my comprehension.
The dangerous dog portion is not a small thing. The spay and neuter thing will have little or no effect on those people. They're not going to license their dogs, they're going to see an animal control officer come, and chances are, they're going to let go of the dog, turn it loose. You're not going to be able to trace the dog back to them. You now have a loose dog on your hands, and somebody who's high-tailed it the other way to avoid being caught. You're going to team up animal control officers and cops so one of them can chase the dog and one of them can chase the gang mayor?
You know, if it was up to be, they'd be opening fire on those. I mean, you know...
Well, we have to, you know, still maintain civility here.
That's exactly, that's exactly what I'm saying. It's time that we return civility to our city.
The dangerous dog...
And having people walk around with pit bulls scaring their neighbors is anything but civility.
Dangerous dog portion will do that. Spay and neuter will have nothing to do with it. And spaying and neutering, as has been pointed out on numerous occasions by several people, is a medical procedure. You can't, you can't tell if a female dog is spayed unless the owner, Joe Average, is walking down the street carrying a spay certificate every time he walks out, just to avoid the risk of having his dog impounded at his cost until he can prove that the dog is altered.
Don't you think that would be, don't you think that would be a good thing if it was the gangbangers we did that to?
You can't just target the gangbangers with a law like this because profiling is not allowed in this country.
Yes, sir.
Let me just observe that the spay and neutering requirements are going to be mostly enforced at the time of licensing. And so, when the dog is licensed, they'll have to prove that it has been spayed or neutered, and if they can't, they don't get the license. If they get the license, then that's at least prima facie proof that, in fact, the dog has been spayed or neutered. And so, it won't be difficult for a police officer to figure that one out.
Well...
You got you.
Okay. No, he doesn't. I just said earlier that I don't believe these people are going to go out and license dogs.
I don't think so.
How can they license dogs?
No, you're right, and I don't think they are either. And that's precisely the point, because when they take that dog out without a license, we now have a reason to pounce.
But...
And that's exactly what we want to do.
But you don't need a spay and neuter law to do that. You already have a law that says all dogs have to be licensed. Enforce your existing law. Don't force Joe Average to have to spay and neuter a specific breed of dog, or any dog for that matter.
Do you have a pit bull?
No, I don't.
Do you have a rottweiler?
No, I don't. I have a lot of friends who do. I have friends who show pit bulls. I have friends who show...
I mean, how can you show a pit bull? It's not AKC-registered.
All right.
Come on.
The rest of the dogs, the rest of the breeds that you've listed in the classification are dogs that are AKC-registered.
You know, I do have a concern about the rottweilers. And I'm not sure that I'm right, but I'm not sure that I'm wrong either in regards to the white rottweilers. I'm absolutely convinced I'm right as to the pit bulls. And the only reason I'm not sure about the rottweilers is because there are a lot of people who do show them, and maybe we could make it easier for them to get past this. But that's something we'll approach down the road.
Okay, you've said that a pit bull includes an American pit bull terrier, which of course is not AKC-registered.
Wait a minute, I didn't say it. The city attorney met with you guys.
Your ordinance says it. Staffordshire, American Staffordshire terrier, Staffordshire bull terrier, both of those breeds are AKC-recognized and are shown in this country on a regular basis. And you said, yeah...
Okay, thank you. I do want to point out that, you know, what we're profiling here is gang members.
Right.
Okay? And it's across the board.
The problem is, you're going to find yourself in hot water for profiling sooner or later.
You know, I've been there before. Thank you.
It's fine.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Just one observation about the registration of the dogs. There is a specific exception, that an owner of a registered dog who is showing that dog can apply for an unaltered dog license and then avoid the spay or neutering. And that's in the county's ordinance as well as in ours.
Thank you. It's, I can't read that last name. Wayne Selix?
Wayne Cerix?
Cerix, okay.
I'm just kind of alarmed at, I'm all for your going after the gangs. No comment, that's beautiful. But I'm concerned about mandatory spay and neuter for everybody's dog. That bothers me a lot. I have a purebred dog. I don't show him.
Is it a rottweiler or a pit bull?
German Shepherd.
Then you're fine.
Beautiful dog.
The German Shepherd gets to keep theirs.
He's a working dog. He still needs work on obedience, though. He's going back to school. He's not there yet. But I feel that a lot of this, you're putting pressure on Joe Citizen that is not necessary. All four of the dangerous dogs, there's a pit bull in my neighborhood that has since left, and I'm glad of it because my dog is very social, but this pit bull jumped the fence and came after him, and I told the owner I was going to kill his dog. I don't want him taking after my dog. And he said, "You can't kill a pit bull." I says, "He's only got one set of jaws. I've got arms, legs, that might too," you know. Kind of worried him a little bit. And they moved on. They left. They were renting, and they went someplace else and let that be another area's problem. But it just seems to me that this has to be dialed in so that we don't step on regular people, regular taxpayers. We don't make our money selling drugs. We work for a living. We're trying to be good members of the community. We enjoy our animals. They're part of our family. And again, the surgery coming in, it's, you know, I'm not going to want my dog to get fixed. My wife, but I just, he's still intact, and I want to keep him that way. I probably will never breed him, but he's got a pedigree about that long. He's a good dog, but he's part of my family, and I don't want to put him under undue surgery. He had a little infection with his ears, and I had to change his diet. I take him to the vet all the time and stay on top of everything, just like I would my own children. And they become part of the family. Gangbangers, yeah, they're a tool. It's been said, and it's true. But leave everybody else alone. Don't force spay and neuter on everybody. It's not fair. That's really all I've got to say. That's my main argument.
Okay. And it's a good argument. Thank you. We have a rule, the PK Shaw rule, your card has to be in before the first speaker takes the podium. But I didn't announce it, and I don't think we have it written down on the form, so I will take the last two cards. Chandler, Chandler, how do you say your last name?
Giles.
Giles.
My name is Chandler Giles.
You know, Chandler is doing the US Robotics, I mean, the robotics team for Lancaster High School.
Right.
Winning all the awards, and he's going to, he's an Eagle Scout. He's getting his Eagle, what, in a month?
I already have it, actually. I'm just waiting for the Court of Honor to be planned. I'm a student at Lancaster High School. It was brought up earlier, the discrimination. I've taken classes with deputies, my professor at the college. We learn all about disparity, discrimination, and discretion. And I think it's ridiculous that some people put it on the deputies, that they're using their discretion for discrimination. I myself know lack in Hispanic deputies. I know several deputies on the actual force. As for being a student at Lancaster High School, if the deputies on campus were using discrimination all the time, more than half of my school would be in handcuffs every day. As for the dog rules, and actually, I haven't read a lot of legislation that's being passed, I don't know about all this discrimination stuff, but as for the dogs, not too long ago, at a church function, we walk outside and there's a pit bull, obviously, that had just been, you know, bleached up by another dog earlier on that day. It's missing an eye. The county's not doing its job. Tons of people called that day trying to get that dog picked up off the street in order to get it helped or get it into the pound. Nothing was done. There's problems there as well. Now, as for discrimination, I don't think there's any person in here that could not tell the difference between an average Joe and a gangbanger and a punk. Obviously, there's not going to be any of the gangbangers or punks in here because they're not going to come into public view to defend their own position. But honestly, I support what's going on. I've had my dog attacked by a dog that was used for fighting in my neighborhood. My dog was actually protecting my younger brother, and I fully support what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Vernon? Vernon, how do you say your last name?
Fier.
Fiera.
My friend. My name is Vernon Fier. I live in Lancaster, Mayor Perez, council members, and city staff. I read the ordinance over several times. I agree with it. I myself have one question, though. How does it affect dogs that are police dogs or military dogs?
Other than the rottweiler issue, it wouldn't. But I understand that a lot of those are, but if they're actually real police dogs and real military dogs, they'd be exempt.
Okay, fine. Now, I have three dogs. I've had dogs over my lifetime, most of the time. I've had my dog spayed, and there's a lot of controversy on it, but the veterinarians I've talked to said that one reason you want your dogs neutered is to reduce the chances of tumors and cancer. And I think that's a good idea. I also have had my females spayed and my males neutered because I felt it was the proper thing to do. I have my dogs well-trained, they're well-behaved. The reason I have dogs is because they keep people away from my property, especially my car, Caspian U. Each one of you weighed 150 pounds, and this is one reason I have it. Also, my attitude is if you want a pet, don't get it. If you want children, get them. Dogs have feelings, they have morals, they have values, and they need love and attention. They also need discipline. What I mean by discipline, a good tongue-lashing. I don't believe in hitting, I don't believe in throwing things at them. But I also believe too, and in this case, too many dogs are being punished for the negligence of the owners. I do hope there will be enforcement to make much stronger penalties against the owner of the dog. It's a shame that dogs must be punished, but unfortunately, their rights must be eliminated for that simple reason. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for that. Okay, come on up.
Hi, my name is Ruth Lewis, and I'm just a concerned resident, and I'm an ex-gangbanger.
Nobody heard you. You'll have to wait till you get to the mic, okay?
Okay, my name is Ruth Lewis, and I'm a concerned resident of Lancaster. And I moved up here, and as a person that works with gangbangers, and being an ex-gangbanger myself, we did show up.
You're not a gangbanger anymore, right?
And, you know, being attacked, taking the dogs or whatever, it's not going to stop them from being gangbangers. It's not going to make them leave Lancaster if they don't want to. What it will make them do is find another way to attack you back. You know, can we find a way to work with them? And, you know, like they had, we came up with a law out there, and they turned their guns in. When you're trying to work with them, you got to come meet them where they at, and it's like, this is happening because of this. Have a meeting, invite them here, and tell them your concerns, so they're just attacking. That's like a kid, a baby ain't doing, "I'm going to take it from you." It's not going to change the behavior. I'm going to find another way to do it. So that's my concern. If we're here to help, we're here to help. We got to work together. Even the housing authority, they know who live in these houses, and most gangbangers live in Section 8 housing. And everybody that's living there has to be on the lease. So if they're going to do a lease with the owner, then they should have in there, "Well, we can't, if this person is this, we don't want them here." You know, but being attacked is just going to start a big, something out of Lancaster. And I don't want my kids to have to live the street and fireworks start out here.
Let me be clear what the policy of Lancaster is. Until these young people join a gang, I think we should do everything possible to work with them, help with them, and find avenues for them to excel.
Right.
Everything we can possibly do. The moment they join that gang, they are the enemy, and I have no desire to work with them. I have no desire to help them. The only thing I want to do is crush them and remove them from this community. They have hurt too many people, and the people they hurt the most are the people they suck into the gang.
Well, I just thank God that nobody crushed me. Somebody came and got me with tips and led me, showed me that there was a way out even after that.
And I can appreciate that, but for every one of you, there's 100 in prison. Every one of you, there's 100 children that end up in prison because of these gangs. You know, I testified at a trial for one of my students who got sucked into these gangs, and he's doing life in prison. I don't want it happening anymore. And the only way I think that's going to work is that we stop accommodating them. They are not welcome in our community. We do not want to work with them. If they are in a gang, we want them out, and there is no option, no option. And we give them the opportunity to get out. You know, the Sheriff's Department is giving them a letter, inviting them to join the Vida program. But if they don't, we guarantee they will be in prison because we have targeted them and we are going after them with all of the force we have. The days of accommodating a gang member are over.
How are you going to protect our children in the street once this starts?
They're a lot safer today than they were eight months ago. There are a lot less gangbangers in this city than there were eight months ago. And the ones that are left are far weaker than they were eight months ago. You know, and I absolutely weep over the damage we're doing to these young people who are in the gang.
Because most of them are because their parents threw them away.
But they have become too big of a threat. They have become too big of a menace to all of us, and you know it better than anyone, don't you?
I would be a menace too. If I had a living parent that threw me away and didn't want to have nothing to do with me, I would.
I know, I know. I am not saying...
The gangs don't raise your kids if the parents don't, and that's the bottom line.
And that's the other thing we're doing next month. If a gang member is in a home, we are passing an ordinance that that will be child abuse, and the children in that home will be, we're hoping, given the success we're having getting them, taking the dogs away, I don't know that we're going to get the county to take the children away, but that's certainly going to be what we're asking the county to do. That if there is a gang member in the home, the children have to be removed. Let's start recognizing this cancer for what it is. It is killing us, all of us, and we have to stop it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the fact that you found a way out, and I really do thank you for coming out and taking part in what you're...
Chandler, you're not allowed to do that. You're breaking the rules.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any discussion?
Can I just say a couple of things, Mayor Perez? I know that the last city council meeting, we discussed the ordinance, and the very next day, I don't know if you... paper. If you remember this, this is where we're discussing the vicious law, dog law, and then over on this side, I don't know if you remember seeing it, it says, "Loose pit bull malls pincher." Now, you know, you people here have such a tender heart for your dogs, this person has a tender heart for their dog. Their dog was ripped apart by a pit bull. Today, we're talking about this ordinance, and we received an email at City Hall from a lady that lives in the east side of Lancaster, and she said that there were her neighbor's two pit bulls, jumped the fence into her yard, pulled her dog, which is a Chihuahua, out of her arms and killed her dog. She has reported the neighbor to Animal Control many times. She's repeatedly told her neighbor and his son not to put wooden pallets next to the fence so that these dogs could access her yard. Just as much as you want to fight for these dogs and this ordinance not to go through, Mayor Perez is correct, it's not only that we want to get rid of the gangbangers, but we don't want these vicious dogs out there anymore. The pit bull dogs do a lot of harm. Today, I saw a man that was, had two pit bulls on a leash, that if those two dogs really wanted to get away from him, there was no way he was going to stop it. I'd like to make a comment with the county, and I think so much what Councilmember Cilio said, was that if the county were doing their job, we would not be working on this ordinance in the first place. The other part is that the shelter was mentioned again, and if the county was doing its job properly, we wouldn't need another shelter. And you did mention that petty things like dogs, the gangbangers, that they're going after, it's not petty when you've got these dogs that can jump fences and go after other animals and do go after children and other people. I just, I'm very happy with the ordinance myself, and like I said last time, if it were up to me, it would probably be even stronger. And there are many options in there. People who have dogs, they're AKC-registered, specific dogs that are police dogs, military dogs, anything that's a specialty breed or dog, I think there's appeal process and ways to get around that. So, enough said.
Anything else?
Mayor Perez, you're aware of the case Brown versus Board of Education?
You know, I think I do remember that case.
Is there a match case?
I had a few calls about that case.
Rottweiler versus Board of Education?
No, we haven't got there.
We haven't got, then that's the point I'm trying to make. Lots of people have mentioned profiling. Yes, you can profile people. No, you can't profile dogs. Dogs do not have the same rights as people. Sorry. This ordinance is about balancing government intrusion and achieving the goals that we set. And those goals were to make our citizens safe. We have a problem with dangerous dogs, we have a problem with vicious dogs, we have a problem with gangbangers. This ordinance is a good balance to give this government the tools it needs to make our citizens safe. Does it affect pit bull owners and rottweiler owners? Yes, it does, to the smallest amount we can and still achieve our goals.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Well, one is, I'd like to thank the mayor for aggressively taking the stance from the beginning on this and really moving this forward with the zeal that he has. But also, I'd like to thank Mr. McEwen. For a lot of the people out here, you know, we've had somebody from the county come up here and say that we need a continuance on this, and it sort of seems maybe for somebody who's just coming in or the media that's filming and recording this now, that we just came up with this last week, and we're just doing it tonight. we're just doing it tonight. No, this is the second reading. Our city attorney, at one public meeting, offered, and has sat down with a lot of the people in the audience, the experts in the community, this is something that's been going on for months, he's consulted with the county, this is not something that's new, this is something that's been worked over, changed, improved, and, uh, and I think it's, I think it's a good ordinance. In fact, I think the way that it's set up and it's gonna be followed, I think one of the things that Mr. McEwen found is that the county actually found a loophole in their ordinance, and when somebody brought up about, I think it was the county representative brought up about due process and going through, the county doesn't even follow their due process law. Okay, they found a loophole to be able to euthanize the dogs quicker without even giving that person a day in court. So, um, I think that ours is fair, and I think it's accomplishing it, and it is dangerous, but it's also focusing on, on what the mayor has said, is that we're not gonna tolerate gangsters up here, and this is just another tool, and I think it's a, I think it's a great ordinance.
You know, I, I would like to be clear. The, the people that came up that, or when the dog, uh, can I say the dog world? The people that are involved with dogs, I, I totally get your position. I, I don't think that I'm right and you're wrong. I, I, I think we have a, I think reasonable minds can differ on this. And you're, you're hearing a lot of anger in our voices, and, and that is not directed at you. It, it really is directed, we're, we're very upset with what the county did tonight. We've never seen that before. Uh, and we're, uh, we're always upset with the gangs. Uh, and I think, you know, you're hearing it in our tone, and I apologize for that. That is not directed at you in any way. Uh, and with that, do we have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll move that we pass, uh, CC4.
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for saying that. Yes, the frustration in my voice is not by any of the citizens that have come forward, and, and I've sat down personally with them, also some of them, and they've taken in, we've taken emails, we've taken phone calls, we've taken a lot of this. And, and this is a process, and this is how we like to do business. We like to take the input from the citizens, take the input from the county, and go through this. So I think, uh, I think the mayor was very succinct on that. It was, uh, we felt sandbagged. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, and Mr. Pelka, none of that applied to you, just so we're- Okay, moving on, public hearing, uh, PH1, Mr. Luticki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item that's before you tonight on this public hearing is the adoption of a resolution that would essentially adopt both the capital improvement plan of the Consolidated Fire Protection District of Los Angeles County, and the annual adjustment of fire protection fees. Back in 1992, the city council, by adoption of an ordinance, uh, became a part of that Consolidated Fire Protection District. Part of that is the adoption, on an annual basis, of an impact fee that pays for long-term capital improvements for fire protection facilities and equipment. The county board of supervisors in November adopted the latest capital improvement program and established a new fee. It is paid at the time of building permit issuance. The current fee, which is approximately eighty-five and a half cents a square foot, would be increased-
I'm sorry, let me interrupt. Chandler, could you stick around? Thank you.
Would be increased to slightly over eighty-six cents a square foot. Um, this fee is basically collected by the city and passed on to Los Angeles County. Uh, we've provided as an attachment for you the capital improvement program and figures upon which this is based. We are recommending that you adopt Resolution 09-05, which would allow the collection of this fee in conjunction with building permit issuance within the city.
Thank you.
No speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion?
Move adoption ordinance, I'm sorry, Resolution Number 09-05.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's unanimous. Now, one of you guys has gotta vote the other way, because they're gonna start saying we're getting along, and-
Doing what now? We're getting along?
Yeah. Moving on to new business item number one, Randy Williams, Public Works Director.
Mayor, council members, I'll try to make this as brief as possible. Um, about three months ago, one of you came to me by phone call and asked that I investigate some problems with contractors starting work before the allowed time that was specified in the ordinance. So we did some investigation, and we found that there were some inconsistencies throughout the various documents of the city, starting with the municipal code, which said that you could not start construction activities prior to sunrise. And of course, as you know, sunrise changes every day. So it was not very specific, and it was kind of hard to enforce. Um, building permits said something different, construction contracts said something different still. So what we have proposed to you this evening is an ordinance change that would specify the allowed period of that type of activity between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM, and disallowing it after 8:00 PM until 7:00 AM the following morning. The reason for that extended time beyond what might normally be considered, um, uh, regular working hours is that the fact that sometimes contractors have large concrete pours or some other type of activity that needs to be worked on after normal hours on overtime basis. So that's the reason why we're making that proposal. Before you then, this evening is a recommendation to introduce Ordinance 916. That would make those simple, but I think important changes so that we can standardize our system. If there are questions, please let me address them for you.
Thank you.
No speaker cards?
No speaker cards? Where's the building industry? I thought they'd be lined up. Okay, any discussion?
I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 916.
Second that. Okay, moving on, new business, uh, item number two. What is that? Who's presenting that?
It's ordinance one.
Mr. Williams again. Oh, you gotta give me a better cheat sheet than this. But perhaps I could've looked up and saw you standing there.
I'm a small figure in front of you, sorry.
I guess there was some queue up there.
This, this next item, new business number two, addresses another, a similar kind of an issue, and that existing policies had, over the time of their maturing, caused us problems rather than fixing problems. Um, specifically what had occurred was a number of years ago, a decision was made and, and direction given that we would, where it was appropriate, have raised medians installed to help provide better traffic control and appearance of the city and so forth. Various reasons for doing that. Uh, up until that time, the standards that we set in, in a, applying conditions for new development required a developer on one side of the road, if the opposite side had not already been improved to its full width, to improve that road on the opposite side of the center line, a distance of twenty feet. Um, and the purpose in doing that was so that full width improvements on one side would be made, and there would be sufficient room on the opposite side for free-flowing traffic. When we changed and started requiring the installation of raised medians, we ate into that twenty-foot period, um, distance, because now we lost about seven feet from the median. And that made it feel a lot more constrained and unsafe. So what we have before you this evening, and it has been previously presented to the planning commission with their unanimous, unanimous approval, um, what we have before you is a recommendation that we modify, again, the language that we would include, so that it would now require twenty feet from the face of the curb opposite where the development would go in. It's a small change, but it nevertheless will improve the safety on, on those sides of the street where medians are constructed and new streets. Um, we have had some complaints, um, from a couple of bicycle enthusiasts who had also brought to our attention that that was a, you know, a, a situation of safety waiting to happen. So we've been working on trying to get this done appropriately, and we proposed to you this evening then the introduction of this ordinance 917 to make those changes. Again, if I haven't explained well, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Any speaker card? Any speaker cards?
Do we have twenty speaker's cards? I'm just teasing.
I'll move that we adopt ordinance 917.
I'll second that.
It was a deep issue, you know, so.
You got me.
Do we get a second?
Yeah, we got a second. And it's unanimous. Okay, city manager? Nothing?
Sir.
City attorney? Uh, city clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on anything that may not be on the agenda. We ask that you fill out a speaker card. You'll find them at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out clearly and concisely, so that if the council or the city staff needs to get ahold of you later, we will have your information. When you, when you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. You'll see a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light will come on when your time begins. The yellow light comes on when you have thirty seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We do ask you to be considerate of the allotted time to allow other people to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting, and we appreciate your cooperation on this. State law does prohibit the city council and redevelopment agency from taking action on items that are not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Okay, now, before we begin, has Assemblyman Knight's office turned off their cellphone? Oh. Thank you. We, we will now start with David Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, good evening. I thought I might be a little late, or so I'm chewing up my two mints really quick. Um, I just first wanna start tonight by saying what a pleasure it is to be here. I love my community, and I am so proud of my elected officials, all of you. I want you to know that. The second thing I wanna say is that the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department is the most professional law enforcement agency I have ever seen, and I have the highest respect for them. Today, I spent the first six hours of my day sitting at the library. The county published or, or, um, put up a TV set there so that the citizens, through Mike Antonovich's, uh, efforts, could sit and talk to the county board meeting. I only found out about that because I work at the Friends of the Library, and was there while they were setting this up, but it was a very neat screen. I didn't get to speak because I had to come home and prepare to come to council. But what I'm gonna say tonight is what I was gonna say there, and what I'm gonna say here hasn't changed because of what I heard here tonight, but it's more to the point than ever. First of all, $700,000 we're gonna get hit with. Second of all, the sandbagging of the county, that wasn't good. Uh, one of the things that struck me today, as I'm sitting there, they're trying to figure out how to fund the processing of all these rape kits. Our Part 1 crimes are down, all except for rapes, and yet there's this backlog. And I do not attribute that to the inefficiency of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. It is just bureaucratic nonsense that continues to go. Now, one thing that struck me, the county is struggling with their money from the state. They're getting deferments instead of payments. The bottom is falling out. We all know that. The bottom is falling out. This is what I wanted to say. This is what I was gonna say to the county supervisors. The reason I'm proud of you all is that you are volunteer public officials. You do not draw salary other than a small stipend. I'm an American citizen. I see these problems go on and on and on. And the example of the rape kit is just an example of how we couldn't fix something correctly that was very important when we had the money. How are we now going to do it when we don't? That's why I started the Human Accountability Project. I want, as a citizen, one thing that works right. Government provide me one fair and consistent service. I know that light's gonna go off in a second. This is what I want.
That works right.
Look, this is not a new idea. As an American citizen, seventy-three thousand jobs yesterday, two million potential this year, we're all bleeding. You're all citizens too. You understand what I'm saying. You want government to do something right. Now, I'm gonna wait and see if that light goes off in, in five seconds and I'm allowed to continue, because this, I have a, a very, very good proposal for us. Thank you, sir. This is real simple. The people want to know that government gets it. I know you get it, but the county guys, the state guys, the federal guys, I don't think they get it. Way back in 1992, this is not a new idea. As an idea for a presidential campaign, we were having a mini-recession then, I thought to myself, look, if you wanna convince me as government that you feel my pain, do something really simple. It's not gonna really hurt you, but it's more symbolic than anything. Take a twenty percent pay cut. I was going to ask the county supervisors to do that, to set a national standard, to go to our state legislature, ask them to do that, and then to the federal government, so I, as a citizen, can know that you seriously feel the same pain I do. That's what I'm looking for. That's all we have. The bottom is falling out. I want some respect for government restored and some faith in our public officials, and I think we should put forth a resolution that every elected government official across this country take a twenty percent pay increase immediately. That's what I want. Decrease, decrease, decrease. That's right, decrease, excuse me. It's, uh, my, my mistake.
Thank you, David.
That, that, that's what I would like us to work on. That's what I was gonna ask the county board to do.
Thank you.
And, uh, it's just a brilliant idea. If people wanna-
I think we should start with our city manager and city attorney.
No, listen to me. Well, you have the-
I heard the word elected in there somewhere.
The governor of Illinois. I, I found out that he makes $175,000 as a governor.
Okay, Mr. Paul, thank you. Thank you.
But, uh, they're fine. They, they earn their money.
Mr. Pelka's gonna be bringing a lawsuit if it, I'll make you sit down pretty soon.
Thank you, sir.
You want equal time, Mr. Pelka? Okay. Now, Harold Ray.
Uh, Harold Ray, I'm with Bonnie License Recovery. We had a problem, uh, up on 130th and O. It's east. Whitefeather has a piece of property up there, and they come up there and took, uh, cars and a trailer off of her property on the seventeenth. The seventeenth, she told us that they come up there and took it off the property. We went up there on the twenty-fifth, when they were supposed to come up there and go ahead and take all of, all of the cars, trucks. There were sixteen vehicles to be taken off of that property. When the officers came up there, we told them that it was under a federal investigation. We're federal, and we told them that as long as those things were stolen, we're gonna run an investigation on it. I told them that they would have to get a court order or a warrant, specifically a warrant, in order to go on the property. That's constitutional. They got on the phone, and they made phone calls for at least forty-five minutes to an hour. Then somebody come up with a car and turned around and dropped off the court order. The court order stated on there, there would be sixteen vehicles to be taken off of that property. Now, on that property, uh, then that we, uh, my boy saw it, he brought it over to, that was Farrell, brought it over to him. He looked at it. That court order was signed by a prominent, uh, attorney in, in this valley. That attorney, that attorney had no reason to re-signing that, a court order. That court order, we're going to send to, up to the judicial performance, because he did sign it, and it was wrong. So anyhow, that's what I wanted to bring to your attention, that Bay Harbor have a goon squad that goes out and tackles these people. We just, we just took down the last one, uh, again, on 160 foot by the railroad track, on, just by the railroad track where it goes by there. The pictures are in there. They come in and they harass the people. This is a, is a harassment tactic.
Mr. Ray, I'd, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. On the second page that you, you've given, I've seen it before. You sent it to me in an email, didn't you?
Yes, that's right.
And on it, you, you have some, are those police cars that are titled wild beast?
Right.
Is that it?
That's right.
And, and then you attach an ordinance that entitles citizens to shoot wild beasts, is that right?
No, there's nothing that, you look at, you look at what it says there. It says some constitutional law. We're not trying to shoot anybody. It's a constitutional law, that they have the right to be on their land. It's the constitutional law that they have the right to be on their land.
Right, and then you, you have a picture of somebody firing a rifle.
Yes. What does it say at the end of the article?
Then you have a picture of a man's, a mannequin, of a man wearing glasses covered in, in red. Is that to signify being covered in red?
That there, that there is out of the police, where they give all of the, you know, officer clothes.
What I'm asking, what I'm asking you is, is that supposed to signify a man?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, let me, I just want to be clear. Is that a picture, is that picture supposed to signify a man covered in blood?
No. What it is, if you read it and see what's on there, it says that it's a gel-filled capsule that they shoot at these people. They could shoot them if they didn't turn around and cooperate and let them come on their land. They, they don't have the right to go on their land without a warrant. That's constitutional. That's what we're supposed to be following. You say, and God we trust.
You know, when I, when I got this, when I got this email, I was frightened. I thought it was a deliberate attempt to, to threaten me.
No, it's not.
Why did you send it to me?
Yeah, but those are the ones, that's a threat, that the ones go out there in those cars do. That's a threat to them, the people out there.
You know, I, I want to be clear. I don't ever want to see you around my house. I don't ever want to see you around my office, ever again.
I haven't been over there.
Good.
See? I haven't been over there.
Well, that's not quite true, is it?
Yes, it is. I was there, I was there when, when Antonovich had his birthday party, and I paid $35 for a steak to go in there, and you weren't even in the house.
No matter what we're doing at that house, ever again, you are not invited, and you are not to come over. Are we clear?
I would.
Thank you.
I would. I'm just saying, follow the Constitution, constitutional law. Thank you.
Oh, I see. Okay, this is good. And we have Mr. Pelka. Do you want to apologize to me, or?[904.82][904.82](laughing)
Am I invited to your house for a barbecue?
Uh, yeah, you could come.
Oh, I can? Okay. Do I get to bring my own?
As long as you don't send me pictures of guns and people covered in what looks like blood and, you know.
Have I ever sent you anything?
No, I'm just saying, I just want you to understand the distinction. I just want you to understand the distinction, okay?
Um, I have a little issue with Ms. Marquez, with your talking about walking down the sidewalk and seeing somebody with two pit bull dogs on leashes. How do you know those pit bull dogs were vicious? You don't.
Mr. Pelka, what I said...
There you are again profiling people.
Mr. Pelka, what I said was that I saw a man that had two pit bulls on leash, and those pit bulls were more power than he could have controlled had they wanted to get loose. I didn't say anything about the person himself.
But you don't know if those pit bulls were vicious.
I said, if those pit bulls wanted to get away from that man, if they wanted to go after another animal, there's no way that that gentleman could have controlled those two dogs.
You don't know if those two dogs were vicious. That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Pelka?
Yes?
You don't listen, I'm sorry.
I really don't want you coming up here and cross-examining Mrs. Marquez. You can if you want to. I know you get it right, too, but if you have something you want to tell us, why don't you tell us, okay?
Do you want to shoot the dogs or the game bangers? Because you said earlier you wanted to shoot them.
Let's be clear. If I could, if I could, it wouldn't be limited to dogs that we were neutering.
Oh, okay. Anybody here have a tattoo? You know, be careful, he's gonna shoot you. By the way, Mr. Perez.
Mr. Pelka, if you can recognize the threat that these gangs are...
Uh, let me, I got one question here. Did you film a commercial last week for the city of Lancaster promoting bi-locally?
Last week? No.
No? Oh, okay.
Not last week.
Really? When was it?
I don't think we ever filmed a commercial.
Really? Oh, okay. No, I was just curious.
We, we did have a press conference.
Oh, well, I don't know. I guess my information's incorrect.
Thought you had me again, didn't you?
No, no. I'll, I'll, I'll find out.
Okay.
If I do, believe me, I will.
Mr. Burgess, we've missed you. Where have you been? Months have gone by. You haven't been here.
Mr. Burgess, haven't you been here?
You know, vacation's supposed to be a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I've been traveling. My name is Gary Burgess. I'm a resident of Lancaster. Good evening, Mayor Perez.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor Smith, and council members. It's been a good night here.[1083.82][1083.82](laughing) I prepared this or decided I'd do this right after the first of the year, and I didn't know the opportune moment would come tonight, so you might bear with me a moment here, because I'd like to take a moment of your time this evening to say thank you for your efforts these past months, for all of you. If I were to pass out a report card for the months since the last election, I would definitely give you a grade that in the old days you'd be proud to take home to your parents. This report card of good grades would point out that we, as a city, are heading in a good direction. That's my personal opinion and hope it's shared by many others. My thanks to the city staff for continuing to excel in their jobs, and I see a continued improvement in the city, especially in the public safety segment. I'd like to thank the council. I'd like to thank the city staff and the sheriff department for a job well done. If I could go ahead and add, this is off, off the cuff, but the ordinance 917, I'm glad to see that was brought up, Randy, that 15 years ago, I brought this to the attention of Mayor Roberts and was able to get Seventh Street East over by the, the old steel supply widened, because that was a real safety issue there. So it's good to see some of these things come about and, and work. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. I think that's it, isn't it?
Mr. Mayor, may I have the...
Yes, sir.
Please, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all of the council. I just want to say that this is my first meeting this year. I don't know if we've had a meeting before, but this is my first meeting this year, so I want to say to you and to all of the, the staff, Happy New Year. And the other thing I wanted to do is just to mention to you how much I appreciate what you, lady and gentleman, are doing for our city. I'm very proud of it, and I want you to know that I'm just thankful to God for it, and our prayers are with you continuously. And the other day, Vice Mayor Smith and, and our city manager was over with my seniors, and I was not able to be there because I had an emergency came up and left a message on your, on your phone. But I do really appreciate you going over and talking with them. I've had calls from them already telling me that they gave me the credit for getting you all over there, so I didn't say no.[1239.12][1239.12](laughing) But I do want, you know...
Henry, we actually, a number of times, they said, "Well, can you take care of that?" And we said, "That's Henry's job." And so we sent him to you.[1249.82][1249.82](laughing)
I know, yeah. That's all I wanted to say, is thank you so very much for all that you're doing, and our prayers are with you. God bless you and Happy New Year, and anything we can do to help, we're, we're ready to do that.
Thank you. That's it on the speaker cards? That was the public business from the floor.
That was all, yeah.
Okay, so we're done. And we have one report from the vice mayor?
Yes, usually I, I go over these pretty quickly, but I just, he got a couple of things. One is, the report's in front of you. I stepped down as chair, I did my term, and Mayor Ledford now is chair again, and Councilwoman Sherry Marcus is now vice chair, kicking and screaming.
Of what?
Of the AQMD.
Okay.
She, she opposed that...
And what is that?
Uh, the Air Quality Management Control District. Yeah, she opposed it, but we voted her in anyway. Fee analysis. You know, I, I mentioned this a number of times over, over the past couple of years. I have really tried to hold the line that this council and the council before has set about being judicious about the taxpayers' money and fees, and, and the first time the budget came through, we, I was able to get it cut in half, and this next time, we didn't do it at all. But it looks like they're gonna be looking at raising the fees. They want 14 percent again. You can see in here that they had a, they had a fee analysis that had significant increases to local permitting for businesses. Now, I've said over the past two and a half years that we needed a graduated scale that's a pay-for-play. There's only two AQMDs in California that do not have that, or one of them. All the rest do. It takes legislation. Well, there's been some dragging of the feet, and it hasn't been happening, and we're looking at fee increases again. And the report that they gave was one that compared us to other agencies. Now, my stance, and it's not really in this report, but I can tell you the stance that I'm taking right now, is that just because another agency charges their businesses more fees, doesn't mean we have to charge more fees. And the one thing that our agency did not do was an actual cost analysis of what it costs for operating, and the fees like Barbara has done for our city so well, and to see whether or not we actually do need to raise the fees and what, and what, what the barometer is for that. So that's, that's, that's that one there. The other one is the Honda hydrogen cell pilot program. We've started, we've talked about it here at the city a little bit, the AQMD is looking into it. I know our redevelopment agency is, is looking at it. The mayor and I have both discussed it a little bit, is that that one is where they have the new Hondas that are out there, and they run on hydrogen cell, fuel cells, but you have to have a refueling station. Right now Honda's decided, I think, one is Torrance, one is Santa Monica. I think this is the best pilot program place that they could have because of all our commuters and stuff.
You know, this is, this is huge, that, and the vice mayor's putting this together by, by himself. And if ever we had an outpouring of citizens sending letters to a private company, it would be now, to, to send the letters to Honda saying how much we, we could use this up here. I mean, think about it. We, we could have the hydrogen refueling station in Lancaster for commuters. I mean, it, it's just incredibly huge. And, and this really was the, the sole idea of the vice mayor, and if we could help him in making it happen, wow.
Well, I think we have more commuters than maybe Torrance does, but he'd look at our freeway every day, so. So that's it for the report. Any other questions? And we didn't have an ABTA meeting this week. We're having a special, a special meeting that we're looking at reformulation and stuff, so that's it.
Okay, great. Any council comments?
Mayor Perez. In, in answer to David Paul, we feel your pain, and you're, you are correct. We're in trouble. There's a, an email that I got a couple of times this week, and I thought it was, it was maybe appropriate just to share that. Says the national budget must be balanced, the public debt must be reduced, the arrogance of the authorities must be moderated and controlled, payments to foreign governments must be reduced if the nation doesn't want to go bankrupt. People must again learn to work instead of living on public assistance. And that was by Cicero, 55 B.C. And also, in answer to that, I would really love to see the state, as well as the federal government, go after welfare and reform it, Section 8, and reform it. And I'm sorry, giving a pass to people who are not even supposed to be in this country and preferring them over American citizens is a crime. So, but there's one last piece of business that we need to take care of.
Count?
Well, I was just going to count. One, two...
Do you want to tell whose it is firstly?
We found out that it was the mayor's...
The mayor's birthday last time, and Sherry drew the short straw, so she's gonna start the singing, but we're gonna join in.
See, I, I told you he'd get out of it.
Well, no, and that was not the deal. This was the new deal, remember? The new deal.
I don't sing.
Remember what the new deal was?
Kelvin was gonna do it.[1609.45][1609.45](laughing)
No. Let's start all over again. This was the deal.
Before you start...
One...
I want you to know, payback is not kind.[1622.62][1622.62](laughing) One...
Two, three.
(singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear mayor. Happy birthday to you. I think the instigator is the first mom that's sitting in the road.
Thank you, thank you very much. I, I appreciate it. It's hard to be 46.[1653.54][1653.54](laughing) Do you remember what it's like to be 46? No, I really don't. Although I had an interesting discussion, and, and there's our people at this table who may disagree with me, but isn't it, isn't it truly shocking, the, the, the level of maturity and wisdom of our president, who is 46, that somebody could be 46 and be that wise? And that responsible, and, and I'm, I'm just, I, I wake up every day and read the paper and see what he does, and I think this is truly a gift from God. And I know that somebody here may disagree with me, but let's go with my sense.
You mean like the $715 million that we just sent over to the foreign nations for abortions? Something like that?
We, we will not agree with everything he's doing, but we love...
Rather keep the money here in economic times like that?
I, I just, I just see a, a level of wisdom that is really surprising for somebody of 46.
Would you give me that?
I'm waiting for it to be proven.
Okay, good.
She's from Missouri.[1723.12][1723.12](laughing)
This, this is one time in our nation's history we better all be rooting for the guy, because if he gets it wrong, we're, we're gonna be toast.
All the prayers and rooting that we can do.
Yeah. Okay, with that, we have no closed session, because I hate closed sessions, and we are adjourned until February 10, 2009, at 5:00 P.M., and the floggings can commence then.
Mayor, mayor? Excuse me, mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
You were going to adjourn in memory of someone? You have an adjournment certificate up there?